This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the Town of North Haven.
Good evening. I'd like to convene the Tuesday, June 18, 2019 North Haven Fire Commission meeting. I'll ask everyone to please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Last for the approval of the minutes from the Board of Fire Commission meeting held on May 28, 2019.
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Any question on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved. The chief's report.
Chief's report. I'll start off with alarms as we normally do. Year-to-date, 2018, at this time was 2,146 alarms. Year-to-date, this current calendar year is 2,071, difference of 75 alarms. Five years ago, we were at 1,938 alarms, difference of 208. Since our last meeting, now remember, we haven't had that much time since our last meeting and this meeting. Numbers may seem low, but it's because we're only a couple of weeks out. So since our last meeting, we've only provided ALS intercepts on nine different incidents, nine responses to the highway. 9% of our calls were EMS-related. We had one call in which we experienced delay in responding and one medical accident in which we were unable to respond. Since our last meeting, 254 incidents, 52 of which were overlapping, which is in about 20%. Regarding our current budget, I'll have some better numbers for you as we close out this current year. I didn't want to give you June's numbers because June isn't quite over yet and it's kind of an important one seeing as though we're closing out the fiscal year. So as a reminder, as of last month, we were at 97.8% last fiscal year, 97.2% this fiscal year. Give us, you know, until the next meeting and we'll be able to give you the final numbers in this past calendar year, rather than current fiscal year we're in. Since our last fire commission meeting, we brought in $19,576 in permit fees. Bring our overall total to $487,984. Fire marshal's office, 30 inspections, eight re-inspections for a total of 38, 14 code violations, 10 of which have been corrected, done 21 different plan reviews or permits, and a number of inspections. That office continues to stay busy. This time of year, we typically see it start to get busy as we start going into the fall as well with construction and so forth. I've got a few things otherwise to discuss. Make sure that the commission is aware that on... Last couple of weeks here, on June 9th to be exact, Engine 2 was involved in a motor vehicle accident on a highway. Just want to stress quickly how serious of an incident this was. I'm passing out the Connecticut State Police Investigation Report for your reference. This occurred about 2:30 in the morning on 9/1 near exit 10. Engine 2 was serving as a blocking apparatus to a rollover motor vehicle accident slightly ahead of it. And as the crews were operating on scene, motor vehicle was trucked that we were in Engine 2, went without service and had to go by a flatbed off the highway. So there are a couple of things worth pointing out with that. The first is that that speaks volumes as to why we position apparatus the way that we do. And when we're asked, or perhaps the fire commission members are asked, "Why are we sending apparatus to the highway?" or "So many apparatus to the highway." Well, that's why, because if the apparatus are involved in immediate treatment, suppression, electrification of vehicles, stabilization of vehicles, they need to be up against the scene while we have that other apparatus that actually are a little further behind the scene or ahead of the scene, depending on how you look at it, and able to serve as a blocking apparatus. So had this apparatus not been there, it's very possible that we would have had firefighters struck by a car. So we do all that we can to minimize this. The lights stay on, the apparatus have reflective stripes on it. We follow all national industry standards for this, but this is one of those times where we still just, we took a hit. I'm glad it was the apparatus which can be replaced and not personnel. But it should heighten the awareness to how much danger we are anymore up on those highways. So quickly to update you, Engine 2, I do not have an update for you. It was taken out of service indefinitely. All the hose has been removed from it. It was the newer apparatus that was assigned to the Monowees Station. It's currently being assessed for the extent of the damage. We've got to check the crane, we've got to check the axle. We know that it has body damage and tire damage. You know, it's one of those things where at first glance, it may not look that bad, but you've got to start peeling some things back and figuring out how extensive it is. So my intent would be, as of next month, of course, to have an update and of course, a plan and already be acting on that plan, what we're doing. But at this point, I just don't have any information other than it took a hit, it's being looked at, and we're working with the, our town insurance and the insured for the individual who struck the car, who struck the engine. So I hope to have more for you soon on that. But that's put us in a pretty tough situation the last couple of weeks. So just to update you, Engine 2 is out. Engine 1 has been out of service since May 30th. It's been back at Cummins, so we're down two engines. Rescue 1 was out of service since June 6th, it just returned a few moments ago. It had transmission issues. So we're currently utilizing a lot of apparatus for structural fire suppression that we don't normally have to use. So some engines are set up for structural firefighting, others aren't. And we've, to give you an example, we had to put our spare reserve engine, Engine 3, which is a 32-year-old engine, in service as a primary engine right now. So we're, one more significant blow up like this and we're going to be really hurt. Now, there's not much more that can be done. In my opinion, the town has done a good job in the last two years. We've appropriated money for the new ladder truck, appropriate money for a new engine. Money this capital year for a used ladder truck to replace the one that we know is going to go out of service any day now. So we're doing okay, but we're just barely getting ahead of it right now. We've got to stay on the course. So I just want to make sure the commission is aware of that. The other thing I just want to make sure that you're aware of is, over the last couple of weeks, we've standardized alarm assignments. This is really more for your reference. But one thing that we know that we're relying upon more and more is mutual aid, particularly for fire suppression. And we've been asked to formalize that, and we've always had working mutual aid agreements with our surrounding towns. But this document really formalizes how those services will be called. And, you know, we often were always asked, "Well, how many alarms was that fired?" "We never operated on alarms." "Well, this document now, we're operating on alarms." So there's defined town coverage and apparatus responding to the scene when we increase number of alarms. And there's a few towns in here that we have not worked with before, but we anticipate working with them in the future. And just keep in mind that this, this also, every chief has been notified, it's been identified in this document. Just be aware that we're also expected to reciprocate. Beyond that, training for this last month has been fire chemistry, pump operations, and ground ladders. Had been a few items for sick and injury during executive session, and that's all I have for chief's report.
Any questions of the chief regarding his report?
I certainly would like to comment. The striking of Engine 2 on the highway, first of all, I'm pleased that none of our firefighters were injured. At first, I was of the impression that we had a minor injury, and I'm glad that none of the firefighters were injured. Secondly, I'd like to question the public, certainly our residents of town, to please slow down and move over whenever you see emergency personnel, whether it be fire, police, ambulance, whomever it might be, public works on the highways or in town with their lights on. Please, please be cautious of our first responders. We hope that they're going to be able to return home after their shift. And distracted driving needs to come to an end. How you could miss an apparatus on a highway is just beyond my understanding. With lights on, and obviously, it wasn't only one apparatus, there were two apparatus. There was a state police vehicle and probably an ambulance there. So, I mean, I don't know what this person was thinking, and obviously wasn't thinking. But please, slow down and move to the side whenever an emergency apparatus is in service with their lights on. Thank you.
Zero 230 might have something to do with it too.
Yeah, Zero 230 might have something to do with it too, right?
If that truck is deemed a total, how long would it take to get another one back?
If it's total, then generally, a brand-new truck takes us anywhere between nine and 12 months to get a replacement, a new truck. I mean, we're in the process with the RFP process to order a new apparatus, and the expectation is nine to 12 months. Is that correct, chief?
Yeah, I really don't know what's going to happen at that point. It's going to be one of those things where if the frame or the axle have been impacted, it may be deep, a total loss. It was a strike by a car, not anything bigger than that, so it's possible. You know, if this were an 18-wheeler or something a little more significant weight, then we'd probably be looking at that as a real possibility. I think it's a 50-50 shot right now. Again, it was deceiving, as you look at it from the outside, and it looks like it's mostly body cosmetic damage, but you don't know until you start taking some things off. And what we've got to figure out, if it is just body damage, if it is just, and I don't say just, but you're talking, there's a compartment right now that came to me open, there's another compartment that was shifted, and the body itself bowed out. It may be one of those things where it may be cheaper and it may be more cost-effective to drop a whole new body on it. But I've got to work with the insurance to find out what's covered, what's not covered, and so forth, and see if they have the same priority and time that we do.
Any other questions of the chief? Here are none, I'll accept the motion to accept. I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead, Joe.
I was going to say, I listened to it on the air, and I was surprised that the person involved did not want to go to the hospital. First thing came to my mind, it was a trailer that it is, it didn't have much damage.
Yeah, no, it wasn't.
But then I went down the next morning and seen it. Lieutenant O'Beare was showing me where it was in the yard.
Yeah.
And I was surprised that, if I found out it was a woman, I was surprised that she didn't go to the hospital.
Right.
I guess if it was a direct hit, based on what I read here in the accident report, it appears that in the last second, she swerved and, you know, only caught her left front and, you know, hit the vehicle, but...
She blew tire on it.
I mean, she was very, very fortunate, very fortunate. As all our volunteers were fortunate, and thank goodness that Noah was there.
Motion to accept the chief's report?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Correspondence?
I have no correspondence, other than the day-to-day usual.
Any commissioners receive any verbal or written communication? Discussion of unfinished business for the fire department?
Said a few things on your agenda, the Connecticut PR application, our hearings continue. We had two hearings on May 30th and May 31st. Our next hearing is scheduled for July 15th. Those hearings continue to take place in Hartford, and we'll see if that's going to be the last hearing or if there'll be additional hearings held after that. We don't know until we get in there. Our Assistant Firefighters Grant, our FEMA application, we continue to wait on both grants. Again, that was for a new engine and for the gear. The only thing I will report is a little bit of positive news, what usually happens, and I don't want anybody thinking it's definite, but what seems to happen in the past is right before we're awarded a grant, we get asked to make sure our financial information is up to date. So I did receive correspondence referencing both grant numbers, they each have a separate number, asking to make sure that our finances are up to date. It's usually a good sign, but there's no guarantees.
But they're asking for financials, what are they actually asking for?
Make sure that your DUNS number is correct, your SAM.gov registration is correct, your checking account number is correct, tax ID, those kind of things.
Got it, got it, got it. I was wondering why they would be looking at dollar values.
Yep.
Okay, good.
So I still wait to hear on those. Again, that could go as late as September or October until we hear anything further. Our training facility here, the only update I have for you is that there were some subsurface testing and investigation conducted on June 11th. That'll allow us to continue with the planning and designing of the tower, because now we'll be able to determine what kind of foundation needs to be incorporated into structure. So I hope to have something for you there soon as well. Regarding the damaged equipment from the Defco Park Road Fire, line number 184176, I'm happy to report that the town received a full reimbursement with the exception of its $10,000 deductible, and the town's been made whole from that claim. So we, our budget also looks like it's been replenished with what was taken out of it. So again, by next, next Board of Fire Commission have an accurate number for you on that.
Very good, thank you, chief.
That's what I have for unfinished.
Any questions of the chief regarding unfinished business? New business for the fire department?
New business, the only item I have listed from the commission's consideration, you don't have to act on it now, is we're, the time for the Connecticut Consortium testing is upon us again soon. We're one of 11 departments that participated with that in the past, and it was a statewide testing effort. You recall the reasons that we discussed for joining it, I don't need to go over those, but it's going to come up again now. We're being asked if we participate once again. If you recall, we could have, every department that participates has basically a demographic sheet that goes with it, and our demographic sheet for North Haven can continue to say what it has in the past, that we reserve the right to maintain an internal firefighter list for volunteers and so forth. So is that something the commission is interested in continuing with for 2020?
Let's open that up for discussion.
I mean, it's gaining popularity, there's going to be more than 11 departments this year, and I think it provides a pretty good, I'm not looking to sell it short here, but I think it provides a great opportunity for us to ensure that we attract a diverse candidate pool.
And that was the whole intent. If you recall, when we agreed to participate in this statewide consortium of testing, they gave us the opportunity to draw from a larger pool of applicants, although it certainly hasn't borne significant fruit for us over the last year. But I think as more departments participate, the expectation is the pool will be greater, and it gives us an arms-length relationship as far as the testing and the applicant pool. So I think what, in my mind, whenever we have an opportunity to have an opportunity to have more diversity in the form of applicants coming to the table for positions that are going to be available in our department, I think that's a good thing. Keeping in mind that the volunteers have the opportunity as well. And I'm so thrilled that we just, you know, swore in the first volunteer in many, many years as a full-time firefighter. So any other opinions here?
I think it's a great idea. I think it worked out well, and we saw we participated. Unfortunately, as you said, we weren't able to take any fruit from the tree, but we did better. We got one of our own volunteers.
Correct.
So that worked even better. But to keep us open to that field, I think it's a great idea. I think it would satisfy a lot of townspeople who think that we narrowed down our pool and we didn't go out searching as far as we should have.
One thing to keep in mind as well is two or three candidates we hired did come off this list. So...
That's good, that's good to know. Ivan, is a motion necessary for this? Okay, are we all in agreement, commissioners?
Yes.
Okay, all right, chief.
Okay, we'll move forward with that. That'll be roughly July 2020, that test will become active again.
Thank you.
Good to the department. I don't have anything, I just want to make sure the commission is aware of the last Board of Select meeting, which occurred on June 6th, in which there was a vote to name the Monowees Firehouse in honor of North Haven's second professional fire chief, Lieutenant John O'Beare. Just want to make sure the commission's aware of that.
I'd like to comment on that, if I could. The first I found out about this was in the paper the other day. Albeit, I wasn't here for February and March's meetings, but as I reviewed the minutes, I never saw any mention of any discussion regarding the naming of anybody to anything. With all due respect to Chief O'Beare and to his family, as I recall, Chief Rosendini's name was placed on the headquarters building in 2006. It was a vote by the Fire Commission, and it was approved by the town's attorney. And the naming of that building occurred. No questions asked, nobody said anything. So about three years ago, I believe it was, we voted to name Monowees after Chief Vincent Lendizio. It was unanimously voted on by this commission and approved. But the Board of Selectmen intervened for some unknown reason and decided that the Fire Commission did not have the authority to name buildings. And not only they had the authority to name buildings, and the first selectman, Mike Frida, at that time stated that no buildings would be named after anyone. Lo and behold, here we are in 2019, with the Board of Selectmen approving the naming of the Monowees Firehouse after Chief O'Beare. I would like you, chairman, to submit a letter to the first selectman and have him consult once again with the town attorney and find out who exactly has the authority to name buildings. I mean, it was clear when he said that no buildings were going to be named after individuals, and that the Fire Commission did not have the authority to name a building when the Fire Commission did name a building. So I'm kind of confused, and I'd like some clarification. And I think we should put this whole ceremony or whatever is being planned on hold until we find out what's going to, you know, who's actually responsible for naming buildings and who isn't.
Okay, any questions?
I think that the only person that has the right to name the building is the Board of Selectmen. Anyone could bring a name to the Board of Selectmen, but no one could personally name a, or any one committee could name a building. But the name was brought up to name that building, John O'Beare, Jack O'Beare, and it went before the board. It was brought before this board as a letter of correspondence. It was read, it was discussed, it was sent to the Board of Selectmen in care of Mike Frida, and it was sent to the chief.
Who sent the letter?
I sent the letter.
Okay, you know, I mean, once again, you've gone around the Fire Commission.
No, I sent it as Peter Criscola.
Okay, Pete.
The same way it was brought up in the...
And why was that?
Why did I, why did I think it should have been named after him?
Did someone approach you with that?
No, no one approached me with that. I thought it should have been named after Jack, and I still think it should be named after Jack because, again, he was brought up, raised in that area, he came through as a volunteer, he spent his whole life in that department. He mentored many of volunteer and professional firefighters from that department. He rose up through the ranks to become a paid firefighter, then he went on to become a chief. He did an exceptional job as a chief, he was years ahead of himself. He planned things out, he foresaw things that we're doing today, he foresaw them 25 years ago. Do I think that he's entitled to have his name there? Yes, I do. That doesn't mean that I'm right 100%, that was my opinion. I sent the letter in as my opinion. I asked the Board of Selectmen to review it and what they thought of it. As they brought it before their board, they reviewed it, they thought it was a good idea. They voted unanimously to place his name on the building. I'm sure that the Board of Selectmen as a whole did check it out with the town attorney. And any and all towns, any building in any town belongs to the town, not to any one individual, and no one individual has the right to take a name off or put a name on. It has to go before the board.
Well, I'm not talking about one individual putting a name on. I'm talking about the Fire Commission, us, 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 voting to put something in the name of a building after an individual like we did in 2006 with Chief Rosendini. And that flew fine. But when we recommended Vinny Lendizio and we wanted to name the building after him, all of a sudden, there's all kinds of problems. I mean, it was voted on unanimously, suddenly, the Board of Selectmen decides that that's not going to happen, that only they can do this. So, you know, on one hand, we have the Fire Commission naming buildings, and on the other hand, we have the Board of Selectmen saying, "No, we're going to name the building." I'm asking that the whole thing be put on hold and that the chairman submit a letter to Mike Frida and get a clarification from him as to, number one, why he reneged on his original statement that known buildings were going to be named after individuals, and now, suddenly, we're naming a building after an individual. That's, and whose interpretation do we go with, or whose decision do we go with? The decision back in 2006 by the town attorney, or the decision in 2019 by the town attorney, or the first selectman, or whoever made this decision? I don't know who made it.
I don't think when 2016, when the previous select person was sitting there, that the Board of Finance made the decision. I think the Board of Finance, I mean, the Board of Fire Commissioners, I apologize, Board of Fire Commissioners made a suggestion and/or application or request to name the building after Rosendini. I think that the first selectman at that time took it under advisement, spoke to the Board of Select Person, spoke to the attorney, and finally made a decision to name it after Rosendini.
I think you're confused.
I think if the first selectman...
Because we voted on this...
Yeah, but if the first selectman chose not to, at that point and juncture, she would have not made it.
I want some clarification and some actual research into the archives of this whole decision, of who made what decision, when, and why, and that's all I'm asking for. Is a timeout and ask the first selectman to intervene and refer this matter to whoever he feels appropriate so we can get a final ruling. That's all I'm asking.
I don't, I was never privy to the fact of the first selectman saying that there was going to be no buildings named after anyone in this town ever again. So I wasn't privy to that. If that was something privately said, I wasn't privy to that.
By the first selectman?
Well, I wasn't privy to that. I didn't know about that, and I heard it tonight for the first time.
Much like I heard about this for the first time.
Well, it was brought up, a letter was sent, I believe, back, what, three months ago approximately? I don't have it in front of me. I believe it was like three months ago. It was sent out, it was put in the newspaper, it was publicized in the newspaper three months ago, was sent to the Board of Fire Commissioners, sent to the chief, sent to the Board of Selectmen. So it was publicized, people had three months to make any comments on it one way or the other. There were no comments made. When it was brought up at a Board of Selectmen meeting, I guess everyone was in favor of it. There was no one on the floor that raised any issue. Passed unanimously between the three members of the board. I'm sure that they checked it out with the town attorney prior to that. I don't think that this Board of Selectmen would do something without checking it out beforehand.
I'm not so sure. And that's why I'm asking for the letter to be written by the chairman to clarify. And I don't know if you need a motion for that, or if it says something you want to do, or not do, or whatever. But it's my position.
I don't have any problem submitting a letter. But as far as clarification is concerned, and, you know, based on what my memory is, back when Chief Rosendini's family submitted a letter making the request to name Fire Headquarters after Chief Rosendini, that letter went to the first selectman, then Janet McCarty, who consulted, is my understanding, with the town attorney at the time, Attorney Porto. Was it Porto?
Yes.
Oh, Porto. And it was the town attorney's opinion that the responsibility came under the jurisdiction of the Fire Commission based on the charter, the town charter. That's why the commission then took a vote and unanimously decided to name Fire Headquarters after Chief Rosendini. So the ball was solidly in our court by the town attorney. And Commissioner Zuccarelli is correct. When this commission did take up the vote to vote for Chief Lendizio's name to be honored to be on Monowees. to be on Montaluis Fire Station, that was an unanimous vote. The letter went to the Selectmen, and at the time, Mike Frida did say that under his tenure, no town buildings would be named. And the issue was dropped at that point. We recognized the fact that that was his position, and whether or not we relinquished our authority at that time or not, I don't know. We may have, or we may not have. Obviously, we had it when we submitted the name for Chief Rosadini, and we assumed we had it when we took the vote and unanimously voted to name Montaluis for Chief Landisio. Now, you know, here we are in 2019, you know, this issue comes up again, and I just said this to Mike Frida, you know, prior, prior to this meeting, you know, even prior to him reading the letter for the nomination of Chief O'Beare's name, I said that there was going to be confusion here because of what had transpired and what he had indicated previously. And obviously, there's confusion. So I have no concern about writing a letter, if that's what the wish of this Commission is, to the Selectmen, asking for a, and I can't see how the charter could be different today than it was when we voted for Chief Rosadini, but an interpretation of whatever the charter is, and whether or not this Commission has the authority to name fire buildings based on our authority as Commissioners, or is it in fact the authority of the Board of Selectmen? So I have no difficulty doing that if that's the wish of this Commission. So Mayor, what's your opinion?
Well, I think to go down to satisfy Mike's question, I think you need to write the letter.
Okay, Pete?
I say no.
Joe?
I think this Commission should vote on it and then let it go up to the three select people. Let us in on it first, so we could take a vote. In other words, I may like this guy, but the rest of yous don't. So, I mean, we should hash it out here before we even send it up to Mike Frida and the other two select persons.
I think that's why I sent the letter in the first place.
Yeah, but we were never discussed this.
Well, the letter was read, and Pete is correct, the letter was read, the letter was read under correspondence. There was no discussion once the letter was read. It was, you know, it was, it came under correspondence, and there was no discussion whatsoever regarding, regarding the letter. And the letter, my understanding, was in the First Selectmen's hands as well. So, I mean, you bring up a good point. I mean, we've always discussed things as a Commission. And hashed it out and came to a conclusion, and we did not do that.
That's correct.
In this decision. But, you know, that's, that's, that's one issue. The other issue is the charter, and how does the charter read? And I think that's what Commissioner Zuccarelli's question is. Is it our authority to name a fire department building, or is it the authority of the Selectmen? I think there was confusion because of the Rosadini decision, and whether or not that set a precedence, I don't know. I'm not a lawyer, but we can certainly obtain that information from the town attorney. So with your permission, I'll send a letter.
Could I just add?
Absolutely.
To Joe's point, we did discuss the naming of the building, and we unanimously voted to do it for Vincent Landisio. Okay, now, that's off the table. If it's off the table, it's off the table. And then we can, should address Joe's point. That's my first point. Secondly, Peter, as far as you presenting this request as a private citizen, I think you should notify this North Haven citizen, because everything that they, every time they referred to you in that article, it was as Fire Commissioner Peter Criscolo introduced a letter, introduced a request, Fire Commissioner Criscolo this, Fire Commissioner Criscolo that. So, I mean, if you, if you did it as a private citizen, that's your prerogative, but I think you should let the newspapers know that.
Well, she called me after the fact and asked me what my opinion was and why I thought that the building should be named after him. And I told him because of the time that I overlapped with the late Chief O'Beare when I came on, and how helpful he was, and he was a mentor to everyone, including myself. When I had issues, I went to him, and he straightened me out now and then, and he did what he had to do. He kept everybody in line, and, you know, he was a fair, honest, decent man. And I think to bring this up now after the fact, to put a shadow or cast a shadow on his name or his family because they're naming the building after him, again, it went before the Board of Selectmen, and all three voted unanimously, there was no comments on the floor. I, I think it would be a disgrace to his name to even do that. And I would not want to be part of bringing a letter before anyone to rescind his name or stop a ceremony to name a building after him. I think that would be a terrible thing to do in his honor. He was a great guy, he was a super, super nice man. I have nothing but good things to say about him. But again, the Commission can go anywhere they want to go.
Peter, we don't name buildings after great guys. I mean, you name them after people who've, who've left a mark.
You don't think, you don't think he left a mark?
I don't want to raise it here, but I don't know. You haven't pointed anything out to me other than he had a vision and that he was a great guy.
You don't think he raised a mark as a, as a chief?
I don't know. I didn't know the man. I'm just saying, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't know what...
You should read about the things that he's done.
Yeah, tell me what I should, where I should find some information.
The schools he attended. We have a chief here that attended the same school. It's an honor. There's only a handful that went there. He has a room named, he has a room named after him.
Confirming somewhere where I can see what accomplishments were done under that, under that regime.
That should have been discussed by this Commission.
Well, it sounds to me like there's confusion and there's question. There is no question about Chief O'Beare's educational background and qualification as an educator. There's no question whatsoever, and the mark that he's made in his life from the educational standpoint. I think Joe is correct. There should have been an in-depth discussion on this Commission, you know, so that the Commission was in agreement and thoroughly understood what Chief O'Beare's contribution to this department was, in addition to his educational credentials and his vision. So that way, there, there was a comfort level for each of the Commissioners. And then, as we did with Chief Rosadini, we submitted our, our, well, letter of recommendation, if you will, and our vote to the Board of Selectmen, who then turned it back to us and said, it's your responsibility and authority to do that. So, you know, I hear a couple of different, a couple of different things being asked. One, to have had this Commission, you know, do an analysis and have a discussion regarding Chief O'Beare and his accomplishments for this department and his educational background. And two, whether or not this Commission has the authority, as it did in naming the building after Chief Rosadini back then, do we have it today? And again, there is confusion here. So, and nothing to be disparaging against Chief O'Beare.
No, we don't mean it that way.
Not at all, and I don't think Joe is saying that. I don't think he's saying that at all.
I'm not saying either. It should come up before the Board of Commissioners, that's all I'm saying.
I think we've all been in agreement with that philosophy, Joe, throughout the years. We've all been under that philosophy. So with your permission, I will submit a letter to Mike Frida, asking for a legal in-depth interpretation. As I said before, it's hard for me to believe that the charter's different today than it was back when, when the town attorney indicated that the Commission had the authority to do that. But, you know, certainly, I'm not a lawyer, and none of us on this, this Commission are. So why don't we get that legal interpretation? And my expectation is, we might very well come to the same conclusion that, you know, a building needs to be named after, you know, the chief, and whether it's Chief Landisio or Chief O'Beare, or Chief Januszewski. I mean, you know, as we move forward here, if that's the wish of this Commission and we have the authority to do so, I think we should discuss it and come to a conclusion. Are we not in agreement with that?
Yeah, it's unfortunate that it wasn't brought up when the letter was read three months ago, that someone wanted to have a discussion on it or look in depth to it, and it sat there for 90 days or 75 days before it's brought up. It's unfortunate that that wasn't brought up the same night that we have a letter, we have a correspondence, it's going to the First Selectmen, First Selectmen has it. It was on the agenda, posted for the meeting of the Selectmen meeting. Nobody went to that meeting to raise any issues about it, and here we are after the fact, we want to dredge it up.
Because you didn't bring it up. You wanted to do what you wanted to do, but it should have came before this Commission.
Joe, there was a letter, Joe.
What was the letter? Nobody asked me if I wanted to vote for him. I liked the guy, I knew the guy, I would have voted for him, but nobody asked me. It seemed like you took the bull by the horn and you did what you wanted to do. We were a Commission here, we're not individuals.
Joe, I brought a letter to this Board to be read. It was read at this Board. You had the same opportunity three months ago as you have now.
I didn't vote on any letter.
You didn't vote tonight either.
Okay, let me, let me just say, I think we've discussed this, and I think we've come to a couple of conclusions. One conclusion is that we should have really discussed the issue in depth and came to a conclusion as a Commission. That was number one. Number two, my, my understanding is that we are in agreement to submit a letter to the First Selectmen, asking for a legal interpretation of the charter as to whether or not this Commission continues to have the authority as we did under Chief, when we named Fire Headquarters after Chief Rosadini. And if we do, why do we not have the authority to do so in naming a building after Chief O'Beare? So is, is it up to this, it's up to this Commission as to whether or not you give me the authorization to send that letter?
I'm saying that in the future, we should have agreed on it as a unit. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying send the letter, cancel it, or nothing. I liked the guy, I think he was a good chief, but I just don't like the way it was done.
Okay.
That's my only beef.
I still believe that there is confusion as to what our authority is as a Commission versus, in regards to naming of a fire building, considering that a precedence had been set by giving us the authority to name the building after Chief Rosadini.
I don't, again, you may be right, but I don't know at the time when the First Selectmen, who was sitting there, gave it back to us because she did not want to do it, wasn't sure how to do it, or just dumped it back in the Fire Commission's lap. So she may have given it back to us, she may have not had to give it back to us, that's what I'm saying. So we don't know for a fact if she did it because she didn't want to get involved, she wasn't sure at the time, or she just took it upon herself, I'll give it back to the Fire Commission to decide.
That's all we're finding out, Joe, is this investigation.
Yeah, Mary Jane?
I think it'd be great to see going forward, but I think right now, this is, you know, I mean...
It's water over the...
Yeah, I just don't think it should, you know, I think that...
I don't think it should be stopped.
It should be stopped. I don't think we should, you know, because he was, because he was a great person.
I don't think, I don't think, I don't think stopping it was, was the issue here. It was the interpretation as to whether or not we have the authority or the Board of Selectmen has the authority, and that, that's the question. Again, there is no disrespect to Chief O'Beare for what he accomplished or didn't accomplish, you know, you know, he made his mark, whatever it was, and I didn't know Chief O'Beare either. But, but again, I think it's a matter of the legal interpretation moving forward, as Joe indicated, and certainly, this Commission discussing fully in the future any recommendations such as that. So...
Would it be safe to say that if we had to take a vote on it tonight, to leave it as Chief Jack O'Beare's name on the building, it would stop at this level and you can go forward to see what we could do in the future? Would that be a fair thing to have a happy medium?
Wouldn't be fair, because we've already voted to name it after Vincent Landisio.
But it wasn't, but there wasn't even a motion on the floor that night.
It was a vote by this Commission.
It wasn't on the agenda, though.
It was a vote by this Commission.
Yeah, but it couldn't go forward because there wasn't a motion on the floor, and there's not a motion on the floor now because it's not in the agenda.
Not on the agenda, this is not on the agenda either.
Exactly, that's why a letter was sent, a correspondence letter was sent.
How are you going to vote on this tonight?
No, I said, if there was a vote to be taken, if there was a vote to be taken, would it be safe to say that what happened as of today, going back and leaving the building named Jack O'Beare, and going forward to change or get a different interpretation, or the right interpretation or the wrong interpretation, let's go forward and move on, but not take, not try and hold up the name on the building?
How long is it going to take to write a letter and get an interpretation from, from the Town Hall?
It's not about a word.
We have called it Red, we've been doing it in August or September.
If it took an hour, if it took an hour or it took five weeks, that's not the point. It's the point of bringing that up.
Bring it what up?
Taking the guy, taking the chief's name and dragging...
Nobody's driving anybody through, Mike, Pete, I know that's where you're going with this, but that's not true.
That's what it sounds like.
That's not true.
It may not be true.
I mean, I've talked to arson investigators and arson people who speak so highly of Chief O'Beare, of Jack O'Beare.
That's what I mean.
I have nothing against Jack O'Beare, his family, or anything. I just want to know why, why now it's not as good as it was before, or vice versa. Why, you know, why, why wasn't our vote good then, and the Board of Selectmen said it wasn't good then, and now the Board of Selectmen is saying that they're going to appoint...
I'd like to put it in the form of a motion that in the future, before we make any decision on who gets what, when, and where, we discuss it amongst the Commissioners. Leave the way it is today, and in the future, anybody wants to name a building, it's got to come before the Commissioners first. We should hash it out and then present it to Mike. If he don't like it, then it doesn't go through. At least give us the authority.
I, I think that's, that's a good point, and I think that's, that's a philosophy that we have had, you know, forever. I think the question here is, do we in fact have the authority, or does the Board of Selectmen have the authority? Pete might be right. Janet McCarty may not want to have had that decision, but my understanding, and I remember distinctly, because the town attorney notified us personally, notified me personally, that we had the authority to name the building because we were responsible for the fire department buildings. So that is what took place then. So obviously, there's confusion here on our behalf as to whether or not, moving forward, do we have that authority, or do they have that authority? So all that we're asking for is an interpretation of who has the authority moving forward.
I didn't think that we had the authority as a Board of Commission because the buildings belonged to the town.
But we did have the authority back when we named the building after Chief Rosadini.
I don't, I don't know if we did. And if you say we did, I believe you, obviously.
Well, no, Pete, I'm telling you, I'm telling you what the town attorney told us personally, that we had the authority, and that's why we took the vote and named the building after Chief Rosadini. I mean, that was our... I mean, that was our authority.
I know that the fire apparatus that was involved in the accident on the highway the other day, when the registration comes back, it comes back to the town hall, Church Street. It doesn't come back to Broadway, to headquarters. Everything comes back to the town, that, that they own everything.
Look, I, you know, I, I understand that. Um, all that, I guess, the, 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 the issue at, at hand is, does this commission want me to send a letter to the first selectman, asking for clarity as to whether or not we have the authority, moving forward, to name a building, or is that not our authority? I mean, that's, that's the question.
Moving forward, not taking away the old...
No one ever spoke about taking away.
That's fine.
And no one ever said that. No one, that never even came up. Uh, we just want a clarity in moving forward. Is, is, are you in agreement with that?
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
Pete, Mayor, Joe? Okay. I'll be happy to write that letter. Um, now, Joe, you've made a motion to discuss fully, moving forward, any nomination for a name of a person, uh, or any, any discussion.
We discussed it here before presenting it to whoever. We gotta, it's gotta go through us. You may like a guy, I may not like a guy, but if the majority of us like someone, we put it up. I'm not saying that we throw it out the window.
And, and I'm not sure that, and with all due respect, I'm not sure that a motion is necessary for that. My understanding is that that is our standard philosophy, that we should discuss all issues pertaining to the fire department here at this commission before it moves forward anywhere.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
That's the reason why I sent an open letter, to be discussed.
So you didn't consult us? You went ahead and do it.
The letter was on the table. Did you read the letter?
Did we have a discussion on it?
Did you want one?
Well, certainly.
Then you should have said something.
No, you shouldn't have brought it up, we're not discussing it with us. You always wanna do things your way. You can't do it your way. There's four other members here.
Joe, I sent the letter, you should have read it.
You're sure you sent the letter? You were looking out for Pete.
No.
You were looking out for me or the other commissioners.
Doesn't say Pete Crisvera Firehouse. Doesn't say Pete Crisvera Firehouse.
You always look out for Pete, how would everybody else?
I think the other thing that we listed here, yes...
Well, that's why I said it, 'cause I always remember it.
The Montaluis Fire Volunteers.
Well, yeah, I...
I don't wanna drag them into it.
Well, no.
Don't tell anybody ever ask them, either.
Well, you know, I, I think, um, I, I don't know if, if the volunteers were involved in the decision-making, or were notified of it at all, I don't know that. But, um, you know, having said that, um, I think we'll send a letter to the first selectman, we'll ask for a legal interpretation as to what our authority is, you know, based on the state statute, and what the, with, with the, with the town, um, charter reads, and I'm hopeful that they'll be able to get that legal interpretation back to us swiftly. And, um, and again, I'm in total agreement with Joe, as we all are, that all matters pertaining to the fire department need to be discussed here in open session, or in executive session, uh, if, if need be. So, um, I'd like to move forward with our agenda. Any, any other questions or concerns regarding this subject? Here are none, we'll move forward. We're into public comments. Do any of you have any public comments, uh, at all? Here are none, we'll move into executive session.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, I'd like to reconvene the, uh, Tuesday, June 18th, 2019, North Haven Fire Commission meeting. We have a one motion, uh, that needs to be made. Commissioner Mulligan?
I make a motion to accept Mark Santor as a probationary member of the Westridge Company Three, pending medical clearance and national background check, effective immediately.
I'll second that motion.
Second the motion. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Any further business coming before this commission? Here are none. I'd like to, I'd like to announce that the next Fire Commission meeting will be held on July 23rd, 2019, at 6:00 P.M. in the training room at Northeast Company Four, 366 Washington Avenue in North Haven. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? All in favor? This meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant fund. The town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.